Okay, good evening. Welcome to the June 27th Board of Commissioners meeting. I just want everybody to know we gotta be out of here in 20 minutes because the game starts at 7:35.[11.28][11.28](laughter) Anyway, I want to welcome everybody tonight, and before we convene the meeting, I'd like to have the Rabbi Daniel Dorsh from the S.K.I.M. congregation lead us in an invocation, and then firefighter Jared Stevens will lead us in the pleasure of allegiance. So if you're willing and able, please stand.
Mr. Chairman, I'll try to be quick.[35.22][35.22](laughter) And let me just say, as we approach the July 4th celebration, nearly 250 years of our country, what a unique, special moment that it is that we can come together in free assembly in that same spirit in which our founding fathers came together all those many years ago. Let us pray. Lord our God, whose spirit is in all creatures, we pray that your spirit be awakened within all the inhabitants of our lands and our country. Today we ask that you uproot from our hearts hatred and malice, jealousy and strife, and that you plant love and companionship, peace and friendship among the many peoples and the many faiths that dwell in our nation. Grant us the knowledge to judge justly, the wisdom to act with compassion, and the understanding and the courage to root out poverty and strife from our lands. May it be your will that our country be a blessing to all who dwell on earth, and may you cause all peoples to dwell in friendship and freedom. We ask, O God, that you speedily fulfill the vision of your prophets. Nation shall not lift up sword against nation, neither shall they learn war anymore, for all of them, from the least of them to the greatest, shall know me. And let us say amen.
Amen.[113.14][113.14](pause)
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[135.38][135.38](applause)
Well, thank you Rabbi, and thank you Fireman. I appreciate starting the meeting this way, and I'm going to call this meeting into order. And first of all, we have a... we have my boss giving me three sets of glasses here.[156.34][156.34](laughter) One for each hour of the meeting.[160.22][160.22](laughter) Couldn't live without Miller, you have. Please don't tell that to my wife.[166.45][166.45](laughter) We're gonna have some amendments to the agenda tonight, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the following additions to the non-agenda items of this agenda for consideration. The first one, and this is for the audiences that are watching online, Tab 15, Item 4, be to appoint the...to announce the appointment of Scott Chadwick to the Transit Systems Advisory Board. And then under Tab 7, Item Number 28, which is on the consent agenda, we'll be adding to authorize a settlement of workers' compensation claim. And then under Tab 7, again, Item 29, to consent agenda, to authorize again a settlement for another compensation claim. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the additions to these agendas as stated. We have a second discussion? Call a question? And it passes five to zero. Thank you very much. So tonight, we have...first I want to say, it's just really great to see everybody here tonight. I think our founding fathers would really, really be impressed that almost 250 years after they started this great nation, this is what they would expect. And so I can't tell you how exciting I am, but you're all here tonight, and I look forward to hearing from many of you as we go forth to do the people's business. So tonight, we're gonna start with Tab...we're gonna start with some announcements, some proclamations, alright? And the first one...give me a second here.[267.22][267.22](pause) Now, just...thank you very much, that's a class.[272.02][272.02](pause) Okay.[274.02][274.02](pause) The first one's from Commissioner Weatherford, to present a donation from the Cobb County Library Foundation for Special Library Programs and Services. Commissioner Weatherford?[291.58][291.58](pause) We have Representative Cobb Library Foundation come forward, please. The Library Foundation is nonprofit, tax exempt, it supports our library system, and we certainly appreciate all they do. And I believe...I believe you have a check. Usually it's a big one, Helen, where is it? Okay, oh, it is a big one.[323.64][323.64](laughter) They give a big one so I can't cash it.[328.00][328.00](laughter) Wow, how much is this for?
This check from the Cobb Library Foundation is in the amount of $25,000.
Wow.
So my name's Dr. Jole Marsh, I'm the current president, so on behalf of our Board of Trustees, it's our pleasure to present this check this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Helen, you want to say a few words? Okay. Well, tell them what it's gonna go for.
Hi, I'm Abby Schiffman, I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and on behalf of the trustees, we'd like to thank the foundation on their hard work in donating this $25,000, which will go towards many wonderful things at the library.
I heard it was going to GEMS.[370.47][370.47](laughter) G-E-M-S.
GEMS program.
Yeah. And that's Girls Engineering Math and Science? Alright, that's a great cause, and thank you very much. Helen, would you like to say a few words? Yes, you would.[386.12][386.12](laughter)
You don't have a chance. Yeah. Again, without the support of our foundation, many of our special programs would not take place. GEMS is Girls in Engineering, Math and Science, and this summer, we had over 125 girls participate in that program. They also support our summer reading program, and each child that completes that program receives a book. And it's all made possible from our foundation, so we thank them for the continued support that they give.
Let everybody introduce themselves.
I'm Dr. McMorris, Director of Public Services for Cobb County.
I'm Ellen Poyer, Library Director.
Peggy Poole, Secretary of the Board of Trustees.
And I'm Peggy Holbrook, I am Vice Chair to the Board of Trustees.
And I'm Abby, and I also want to let you know that the Library Foundation is having their gala coming up, September 22nd, so look for information for that to come out to help support the library.
Alright, thank you.
Dr. Jole Marsh, I am the current president, and thank you to all the Cobb residents, actually, who contribute to the foundation by attending our Book for Lunch events, and also our annual gala. This year, the gala will be phenomenal, look it up. It's gonna be hosted at the Marietta Hilton. It'll be a phenomenal event, guaranteed to have a good time for all, and the focus is going to be on the Civil War.
World War II.
Oh, sorry, World War II.[476.62][476.62](laughter)
Big difference there.
One of those.
So much for Canadian transplanted to Georgia.[484.75][484.75](laughter)
And I'm Kit Trench of the Foundation Board.
I'm C.W. Hall, current Vice President for the Foundation.
And I'm Michael Kreis, I'm the current Treasurer of the Foundation.
Let's give this group a big hand.[500.62][500.62](applause) Thank you so much for all you do, and the gala, I'm pretty much a comic book guy. Are comic books gonna be there or anything, or just regular books?
I missed the question.
I was just asking, are comic books gonna be at the gala?
I don't think there'll be comic books.
Oh darn, okay.[516.75][516.75](laughter) (pause) Thank you very much. Thank you.[521.12][521.12](pause) Thank you, Commissioner, and now we have Commissioner Cupid to present a certificate of recognition to Craig and Michelle Walls for their work preserving and protecting the heritage of the Moss Family Cemetery for future generations.
Thank you. If I may have the Walls come join me in any representation from the Cemetery Preservation Commission?
Good morning. Hi, good afternoon. Nice to meet you, Michelle. Hi, nice to meet you too, thank you. Hi, Helga, thanks, Steve. How are you?
Tonight, I have the pleasure of recognizing two members of our community, and in receiving this request for recognition, it made me realize just how much we take for granted the assets that we have here in Cobb. And one of those assets that can be easily overlooked unless they are not being properly maintained are cemeteries. And we've had an outstanding commitment made by two members of our community in maintaining a cemetery here in the South Cobb area. With that, I'd like to read a certificate of recognition on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners honors you for your dedication to protect our history and heritage by adopting the Moss Family Cemetery in Mableton. Your time spent over the past 30 years cleaning and maintaining the cemetery exhibits exemplary character and ensures the preservation of our past for future generations. We thank you for your commitment and faithful service to our community. Thank you so much.[669.23][669.23](applause) Okay, would you like to share any words, Mike or Helga?
Thank you. I'm Mike Jones, Cobb County Cemetery Commissioner for District 4. We really appreciate all the work that this family has put into this cemetery over the last, gosh, many, many years, and they finally adopted it and made it official, so now they get the credit that they so deserve. Thank you.[701.48][701.48](applause)
As a shared, we should have more people like this in our community. Before you leave, let's make sure we get our picture.[711.62][711.62](pause)
And now we have Commissioner Burl to present a proclamation to the Marietta Lions Club in celebration of their 75th anniversary.
Thank you. Steve Hughes, the President of the Marietta Lions is here tonight, along with a great group of folks. You probably recognize a former employee who recently retired, John Rita and his wife Mary Ann are here as Lions. And I have the honor of presenting y'all a proclamation for your 75-year anniversary in service to this community. The Lions Club, we usually see the South Cobb Lions Club up here, from Commissioner Cupid's district, because they have an adopt-a-mile program in South Cobb that they clean up our highways and roadways. So now we get to hear from the Marietta Lions Club, and these groups are very near and dear to my heart. My dad was a lion in North Carolina, a roaring lion, and one of my fondest memories of him being in the Lions Club there was the daddy-daughter dances that they had every year, and I'm dating myself because I don't even know if y'all still do that or not. But that was a fun event every year that we all looked forward to. So, whereas the Marietta Lions Club received its official charter on September 4th, 1942, the organization started with 17 members, and whereas in 1956, the club provided the equipment for the eye clinic at Kennystone Hospital, as well as all of the medicines dispensed by the clinic. Site conservation has been the major service of the club. For more than 70 years, the club has purchased eye exams and glasses for needy people. And whereas eventually five new clubs were started, Smyrna Jonquil, Alpharetta, Brookhaven, East Marietta, and Acworth-Kennasaw. And whereas the club also provides support for Georgia Lions Lighthouse, Georgia Lions Camp for the Blind, Men's and Women's Extension, Leader Dogs for the Blind, Southeastern Guide Dogs, Miss Cobb County Scholarship Pageant, Boy Scouts, Eagle Projects, Marietta Museum of History, Camp Kudzu for children with diabetes, Christmas Meals on Wheels, and eye screenings at community events. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor the Marietta Lions Club on its 75th anniversary. We appreciate its history of commitment to our community through service. This is the 27th day of June 2017. Congratulations.
Thank you.[918.70][918.70](applause)
Thank you very much. Thank you.[922.12][922.12](applause) Yeah. Thank you very much to the Commission, Commissioner Burrell. We appreciate your time and your efforts in putting this together. I share with my fellow Lions the lion pride of being able to serve here in Cobb County. The events that we've done to raise funds have gone directly back into the county. As mentioned in the proclamation, we serve many different areas here, and we are just pretty much swelled with lion pride to be able to do that. So again, we thank the Commission. I would like to have everyone, if they would, please introduce themselves. Again, I'm Steve Hughes, the President of the Lions Club.
I'm Bob Coach, past President.
Mary Ann Rata, Tail Twister.
Rhonda Frazier, Secretary.
Nan Hughes, I'm in charge of the exams and the glasses.
Patty White, Past President.
Robert Morris, been with the Lions Club for 12 years, I help out with the eye glass committee as well.
I'm Dave Nice, Board Member.
Dallas Olson, Membership Chair.
David White, Current Treasurer and Past District Governor.
John Rita, Past President.
One of the events that is a big part of our heritage, in 1952, the Lions Club raised funds to donate an emergency vehicle to the fire department. That vehicle, you will see it, the 4th of July, will be the lead vehicle in the 4th of July Parade, and we have a very accomplished driver here who gets it up and down the street if the battery stays charged, so hopefully it'll work fine. To commemorate that, we commissioned a pen for this year to commemorate 75 years, and it's a replica of the fire department vehicle, so I'd like to present this to each of the Commissioners. Thank you very much.[1043.75][1043.75](applause) Thank you, Bob.[1045.75][1045.75](applause) Thanks, Mike. Well, we can accommodate it, we can accommodate it. Bob, thank you very much. We appreciate it, thank you for coming to see us.[1061.23][1061.23](laughter) We can get him some. Thank you, Commissioner, we appreciate it, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much, thank you.
You're supposed to be in the middle, but...
Oh, I'm not. I'm in the middle. Hold up, let's have this up here.
Property Management, it's good to see that he's still continuing to service to the county, so it's good to see him back. Okay, before you leave, I need some more glasses.[1154.42][1154.42](laughter) Okay, we're gonna go on to Tab 4 now, a public hearing. And this is a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Tiburon Parkway?
Tiburon Parkway, yes, sir.
That one too. Located in Land Lot 753 and 760 of the 17th District, Second Section of Cobb County.
That is correct, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. This item is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Tiburon Parkway located in Land Lot 753 and 760 of the 17th District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia. Tiburon Parkway, located in Commission District 2, is classified as a local street on the county's major thoroughfare plan. Ashbrook Crossing LLC and Aspen Hills Associates LLC have purchased all the property adjacent to the portion of Tiburon Parkway. The property owned by, I'm sorry, Aspen Hills, has been approved for the development of a climate-controlled self-storage facility. Public access along this portion of Tiburon Parkway is no longer needed. We request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Tiburon Parkway located in Land Lot 753 and 760 of the 17th District, Second Section, Cobb County, determine that said right-of-way serves no substantial public purposes, and authorize the disposition of the same by quick claim deed to the adjoining owners, Ashbrook Crossing LLC and Aspen Hills Associates LLC.
Okay, just want to remind everybody at this public hearing that every speaker has the opportunity to speak for three minutes, and with that, I now open up this public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address this issue? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address this issue? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing to a close. And Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that the county close and abandon that portion of Tiburon Parkway located in Land Lot 753 and 760 of the 17th District, Second Section, as depicted in the agenda.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Right, sir.
Okay, with that, we go on to Tab 5, and we have Dana Johnson lead us in another public hearing. This one to solicit commends on various proposed amendments to the Code, the County Code.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development, here for your first of two public hearings on changes, the July amendments to the Cobb County Code. The second public hearing will be at your second meeting in July, which I think is on July the 25th at 7 o'clock PM. The amendments being presented to you today are amendments that come from one or two areas. Either Commissioners have sponsored, two Commissioners have sponsored the amendment for it to be brought forward, or brought forward by staff as clarification, or in some instances, the whole Board has made a request for consideration of a particular item. And to jump right into the proposed changes, we start off, sir, with Chapter 2 in the Economic Development Section of the ordinance. This particular recommendation is to consider enacting a community redevelopment tax incentive program. The purpose of this program is to remove blight in Cobb County, and its intent is to encourage property owners to properly maintain their property through the auspices of this particular program. Through this ordinance, blight is defined for a number of different ways, and two of these items or criteria would need to be met in order for a blood condition to be enacted. And you can see here, it's a variety of different items, I'm not going to speak all of them, but they're things like unsafe structures, high amount of illegal activity, environmental contamination, and a number of other items that are contained here as criteria that could define blight. If a property is defined as blight, then as is currently written, seven times the taxes of the ad valorem taxes would be charged to the property owner as a penalty. And it's important to note that occupied primary dwellings cannot be covered by this ordinance. So if you are a...if you are an owner of a home that's your primary dwelling, then this ordinance would not be able to be enacted upon your land. Revenue generated from this particular program would be able to be used in a couple of different ways. One, it could be used from an approved redevelopment program if the county had an urban redevelopment program under the auspices of state law. It could be utilized for the closing, repair, and demolition of other unsafe structures. Or third, it could just be money that goes to the general fund for general county operations. How a property is defined as blight through this ordinance, first thing that will happen is staff will receive a request. A request will come in one of three ways. A Commissioner could request that a piece of property be reviewed, the Community Development Director could request staff that a property be reviewed, or five residents of the county could sign a petition asking for their government to look at a piece of property as a potential blooded condition. Then staff who are qualified to make these judgments will go out, and they will inspect the property to see if the criteria is met for a blooded condition. They will then create a report, that report will go to the Department Director, and if a...if it is found to be blighted, we will provide a written notification to the property owner. And part of that written notification will be an opportunity for them to remedy the blooded condition. Again, our intention on this is to remedy blight, not to gain revenue. Our desire is to remove blooded conditions and help stabilize neighborhoods throughout Cobb County. If they do not remove the blooded condition, then, working with the county attorney's office, we will take this and make a formal complaint to the magistrate court judges. It'll be through a court summons, and then finally, if the magistrate court finds in favor of the county, then an official written determination will be made. After that court order is made, then and only then will this program be able to be enacted upon a piece of property. So it's going to be a very thorough and very thought-out program, so it's not going to be, I hate using the word willy-nilly, but it won't be a willy-nilly decision, it'll be very thought-out, and it'll go through many layers of review prior to enactment of this particular program. There is the opportunity for voluntary remedy, as I stated before, and our desire is, again, to remove blooded conditions, so we're hoping to work with the property owner to get rid of the blooded condition before we even had to take it to magistrate court. If a property is determined to be blooded through the condition, there is a mechanism for them to remove that blood condition. Basically, staff, if they will let us know that they have did work on a property, they came and got a permit, that permit has been properly issued, and it's gone through the process of inspection, we can then go out and certify that the blight is no longer there. If a blight is removed from the property, then the state law does require that the property tax assessments for that particular property go below the current millage of the county as kind of a, lack of a better word, bonus for removing the blooded condition and paying that additional tax they paid towards it. So that decrease will be an important part of it, and what we are currently recommending to the Board, and the Board has discretion on this particular issue, is we're recommending a 0.5 millage rate, the percentage is incorrect on that, by the way, it should be 0.5 mill reduction for a period of no more than four years. And if the 0.5 mills reduction pays back before the four years is ended, then that four-year timeframe will be shortened, so that when they're not receiving an extra bonus above and beyond what they have already paid towards the program. Getting into Chapter 6, we have changes to the alcohol beverage code. Most of these changes deal with a change in state law that happened this year and was signed by the Governor as it relates to breweries and distilleries and their ability to sell directly to consumers as farm wineries are able to do throughout the state right now. Those changes are contained in 6-1, 6-7, 4191, 123, 129, 130, 131, 221, and 236. So basically, we've gone through, in any area of our code that has a particular exemption for a farm winery, we also included the craft breweries and craft distilleries to accompany that as well. In addition to that, there are changes in 6-124 and 6-125 that deal with distance buffers for individuals who have an existing alcohol license and want to expand it. For instance, if an individual has an existing beer and wine license, and they wish to start selling spirited liquors, then they would not have to go back through the distance waiver process, since they've already gone through that process the first time in the issuance of their original license. Getting into Chapters 18, which is the building regulations, under 18-122, we are removing the definition of blight, sorry, of building height, excuse me, out of the building code, and later on in the presentation, you'll see that we are incorporating all of that into the zoning code. A situation we had is we had a different definition for height in the building code than we had in the zoning code, which caused some conflict. than we had in the zoning code, which caused, uh, some conflict that we are trying to remedy with this particular ordinance. In addition to that, eighteen dash two-thirty-one, two-thirty-two, and three-oh-one are some strike-throughs and additions that are necessary in order for us to be able to enact the state-mandated new swimming pool and spa code, uh, which is now being required for us to regulate. Under Chapter One Ten in the subdivision code, it's one-ten dash one, we are making a clarification that a lot split, if it is under certain criteria, would not be considered a subdivision. As a good example, if an individual owns, uh, a one-acre lot in an R-twenty zoning, and they just want to cut the piece of property in two, to put two houses on it, that lot split for those two homes would not be considered a subdivision as it relates to complying with all of the subdivision regulations, uh, and they would be able to do that through, um, a more expedited process of just a lot split. Under Chapter One Thirty-four of the zoning code, one-thirty-four dash one, we are recommending the, a definition for building height. Basically, what we have done is we have taken the definition that was, uh, the way that staff was interpreting the, the code for height and incorporated that into the zoning code, uh, we have had a lot of public discussion as it relates to this, uh, and certainly, I'm open to any ideas, uh, that others may have as other ways of which we could attack this particular issue in our community. Getting into Chapter One Ninety-eight dash one of one-thirty-four is the open space community designation. A couple of items that are contained here. Uh, first of all, we are removing the R-eighty and the R-forty as eligible districts. I don't think we have ever had an OSC for those particular zoning categories, since there are very few of those, of those, those zonings remaining in Cobb County. Also, we are changing the posting period. We have changed our practice a while ago, but never updated the code, where we are requiring thirty days instead of fifteen-day public posting period, so we're making sure that our code is matching our practice. We are also amending a number of review criteria, including instituting a seven-and-a-half-foot setback rather than a varying setback on the properties to make sure that a fifteen-feet between homes, uh, still exist. We are instituting some minimum lot sizes, or recommending that the board consider instituting some minimum lot sizes for the R-fifteen, R-twenty, and R-thirty zoning categories. Uh, one recommendation is that a fencing be placed, uh, between homeowners' land and protected open space in order to ensure that, that encroachment does not occur within open space areas. Uh, and lastly, for net density, where we are recommending the removal of the density bonus as part of the OSC, so the density would then be contained with that which exists in the underlying zoning. Lastly, sir, in Chapter One Thirty-four dash two-seventy-two, under the supplemental regulations, uh, we are recommending that in residential zoning categories, that a two-hundred-square-foot gravel parking area lot be allowed, uh, with, with some criteria as it relates to containment of that particular gravel area with some type of masonry wood or other border. And with that, sir, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board, and I'll also ask if you would please open up a public hearing as it relates to the amendments contained herein.
Okay, I think what we'll do is we'll ask for speakers first, all right? So just remind everybody, three minutes, uh, per your time at the podium. So with that, I now, uh, declare this a public hearing for these changes, recommended changes to the county code be opened. And does anybody wish to address the podium? Okay, Amy, please.
Uh, my name is Amy Barnes. I have but one question about the encroachment, um, adjustments. Um, as far as the fence goes, who would pay for that fence?
Hey, um, Dana. Amy, you gotta come back up here, you know, all or nothing.
In, in the OSC code as drafted, that would be a requirement of the developer, uh, to pay the fence during, or to pay for the installation of the fence during the construction phase of the subdivision.
So this would not apply to existing properties?
Existing properties would be exempt from it because they would already be have existing, they'll be grandfathered in, basically. So this would only be new OSC communities.
Because I've been told in the past that the department is no longer honoring grandfathering.
That's a separate issue, Amy. Just, just for this right here, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Uh, I tell you what, um, Jill, you can come on up and just ask everybody else just to grab a seat somewhere so you don't block the view. There's plenty of seats over here on your, on your left. Thank you. And I'll call you up. You got, you'll all get your time. Okay, Jill, welcome.
I'm waiting for technical. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jill Flam. I'm representing East Cobb Civic Association and our comments on the proposed July code amendments. We will be commenting on Section One Thirty-four on Pages Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen, and will follow what was previously submitted this morning to you all via email. With regard to Section One Thirty-four dash one, building height of a residential structure, nothing in the revised residential building height code will prevent this from occurring again. A house built on a previously flat lot like the surrounding lots that now towers over every one. East Cobb Civic Association recommends that Section Eighteen dash Twenty-seven E be revised to require an applicant to state in writing how much they intend on raising the lot over the four-foot limit, as well as elevations of the property at the time they are seeking permission from the district commissioner. We further recommend that Section One Thirty-four dash one be revised to prevent a house from being over the thirty-five limit, foot limit, on the front side through the use of having an exposed basement of ten feet or less visible on the front and raising the grade at the front door. With regard to Section One Thirty-four dash One Ninety-eight, the OSC ordinance, while we understand there is a need to review this section of the code, we are not sure that these changes will solve the problems that we are currently experiencing. ECCA will continue to study this section and may have further comments prior to the next hearing. With that said, we are concerned that this new section does not limit the impervious surface on any lot in this district. Currently, the amount of impervious surface is based on the minimum lot size of the underlying zoning. Even using the proposed minimum lot sizes on an R-fifteen OSC lot, it would allow for fifty-two-point-five percent impervious coverage, a fifty percent increase over what is allowed in LDR, even higher than what is allowed in MDR. It was argued that this increased allowance was granted because there is more open space in the subdivision as a whole. However, this assumes that all lots drain toward the open space. We have already seen cases that people have increased the impervious surface limit and to the maximum, and now flood their neighbors' homes, which are downhill from their lot. We recommend that a maximum impervious surface be stated for OSC districts, no matter the lot size. We would prefer it be thirty-five percent, as it is with other zonings in LDR, but we recommend that not be increased to any more than forty percent, like what is currently allowed for zonings in MDR where similar lot sizes exist. We also recommend that if fencing is required for OSC districts, that it be open in nature to avoid the problems with homeowners dumping yard debris and other items over a solid fence to avoid seeing it, but affecting the neighbors on the other side of the fence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Doug Davis, representing the ECCA, East Cobb Civic Association. Section One Thirty-four, Two Seventy-two, parking. The East Cobb Civic Association cannot support this change. In the past, it has been handled with a variance on an individual case basis. The BCA then can have an opportunity to see if other component containment measurements are necessary, such as a concrete apron to contain the gravel due to the, to graphically of the lot. We believe that we will, excuse me, I'm reading this, guys. We believe that we will be, there'll be another demand on code enforcement to make sure that the gravel is maintained and does not flow into the roadway. It removes the incentive to use pervious pavers. Subdivisions may have to change their standards as the county no longer allow parking only on a hardened surface. The county already allows parking on concrete pavers, which is cheaper alternative to concrete or pervious pavers. Thank you very much.
So, before we hear the next speaker, uh, Dana, why did we, uh, why did we change the, uh, impervious surface amounts in the lots for this recommended changes? Was there something that drove that?
We are not making recommendations on the impervious surface at all right at, right now, sir.
Okay, all right. Because she, uh, Jill made a comment about that, I thought maybe we changed the, uh...
I, I think they would like to see, uh, new regulations be placed within the OSC as it relates to impervious surface, sir.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um, Jill? Oh, I'm sorry, Kelly, I apologize. You're not even, you don't even look alike, I have no excuse.
It's okay, I won't do to you what I did to Jason Gaines when he did that.
I deserve it. Take your best shot.
Uh, good evening. My name is Kelly Gamble, and I'm president of People Looking After Neighborhoods. Uh, Section One Thirty-four, Two Seventy-two, five, off-street parking. Concerns have been raised regarding the two-hundred square feet of parking gravel access, as residents in West Cobb have driveways that are not of hardened surface with boundaries held in place by metal masonry or wood borders. We also have areas that have a combination of gravel and hardened surface. While existing driveways would be grandfathered, will this prevent current and future homeowners not in a platted subdivision or on multi-acre lots from having a gravel driveway that exceeds two-hundred square feet? While we understand the intent and use of this amendment, concerns over individual property rights remain. Therefore, we ask for continued review of this proposal. Section One Thirty-four, One Ninety-eight, one, open space community overlay. The proposed changes still do not address the underlying problems with the OSC code. Code defines primary conservation area as a hundred-year floodplain, required stream buffers, slopes greater than twenty-five percent, wetlands, endangered species or habitats, archaeological sites, and cemeteries. The net buildable area is defined as removing some of these, except for stream buffers, slopes, endangered species or habitats, and archaeological sites. Are these not the areas we are trying to protect? Yet code allows for density to be calculated upon them as if they did not exist. Georgia Code OGCA Thirty-six, Sixty-seven, Three, zoning proposal review standards contains the six Steinberg criteria, which the planning department or agencies shall be required to make such investigation and recommendations with respect to reviewing zoning proposals. Interestingly enough, Cobb County Code, Section One Thirty-four, One Twenty-two, staff report, has included only five of the Steinberg criteria to which they base their recommendation. It has been my understanding that Cobb County can have more restrictive guidelines than the state, but Cobb seems to have admitted the following Steinberg criteria standard: whether the property affects, affected by the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. Requests for rezoning to OSC have been inconsistent in requiring applicants to submit site plans showing the proposed R-designation density can be achieved as presumed. While the density bonus has been removed from code, the applicant should retain the primary burden of demonstrating that the proposed, proposal complies with all standards prior to the approval by the Board of Commissioners and submission to site plan review. We request that this proposed code amendment change be held for further review. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Brown?
I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. I'd like to address the proposed community redevelopment tax incentive amendment. I think this is a great tool, uh, to add to the toolkit that we have in Cobb County. Um, I do want to note that Cobb County, as the Atlanta region, has many nonprofit organizations. Uh, occasionally, one will make the news for reasons that aren't so good. Um, and as you know, nonprofit organizations are exempt from ad valorem. I would just like to suggest that maybe we need another tool in the toolkit to be able to address problems if a nonprofit organization, uh, should need some attention, and there is nothing really to address the situation. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Thank you.
My name is Monica Delancey, and I too want to address the community development tax incentive program. My question would be, um, would people be penalized if they cannot afford to upkeep their properties? Um, a lot of people that live, that reside, and are, and that are still owners in the South Cobb community may not be able to afford the upkeep of their homes because they, they don't have the income to. So would there be any funding available for those people who would like to keep their homes, um, and provide the necessary repairs? Would there be any type of funding for those, for those individuals? As well as, how are we gonna do with education, going out to these communities and telling them about the blight program, and telling them about the incentives? So would there be any type of workshops provided to the communities? So those are my questions pertaining to that program. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I believe when Dana, um, read the code, that, uh, that this cannot be applied to a occupied primary residence. So if someone's living in the property, it doesn't apply.
And the other part is, is that, and I don't want to overstep my, uh, my information boundary here, but I do know that CDBG has some programs to help people with their homes, and I don't know what the, what, what it is they can do with the homes, but I do know from personal experience, working with a, with a lady here in county, that we have been able to use CDBG funds to address some residential issues in her home. But like the commissioner said, uh, if you live in a residential home, it's, you're exempt from these, uh, from the, from this, uh, this tax. Hopefully, that gives you some degree of assurance. All right, are there, uh, do I see anyone else that would, that would like to...
Surprise.
Okay, come on, David. No, no problem. Hey, more the merrier.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, and City Manager. Uh, on this blight, is this gonna change the abatement? The way we do abatements in, in Cobb County? Okay, we're dealing with homes here on how junky the homes look. How about commercial properties? We have commercial properties in Mapleton, where you have a service station, they've been sited and sited and sited, nothing happens. You have Mother's Best, uh, Cafeteria, or whatever it was, catering, been sited and sited. You have a little building by Floyd Road that's been three years in the renovating stades, that's been sited and sited. I got signatures up for having these three properties abated. Well, I got turned down because they're not capable of saying what the properties were. Well, when you run through the abatement part, it'll tell you the process, it, process it goes through, but you're leaving commercial properties out. You gotta include commercial properties. And Powell Drive is another one that is a blight. You have a blight of cars down there, you have a blight of, and all these people, or most of the people down there, the owners live out of state. One's in Savannah, one's here, one's there, and we can't touch them, so code doesn't do anything to them. Like I spoke before on the, Mapleton, on the, uh, uh, buildings like this, you know, find them. Well, I can see they're starting to find them now, or wanting to, but you're leaving commercial properties out, and they need to be included.
Actually, this, this tax is for commercial properties. What it exempts is residential. So I think that what we're doing is responding to, um, comments that you have made over the last several months about these specific kinds of buildings, uh, and this is, uh, this is one way that we're gonna address it. So the good news is, is that those concerns that you have, if we can get this passed by the board next month, uh, then we can start to address these specific issues that you're talking about, and, uh, we're either gonna have your commissioner put this on the list, or you can get four more of your, of your friends here in Cobb County to submit a, a, a commercial property to be considered. So this is a mechanism that we can do to address that very specific issue that you and others have been talking about.
Okay, well, I was just understanding it was for residential, because that's all I showed was houses.
It just exempts residential.
Okay.
Just the primary occupied residential. So if somebody owns the home and lives in the home, it's exempt. However, commercial property does fall under the purview of this ordinance, so it, we can apply it to those properties that you shared.
One other question, uh, Dana, let's say it's rental property. Is that now defined as commercial or, uh, or residential?
A, 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 a piece of rental property is not considered occupied primary residence.
Okay, so we've qualified...
My understanding in, 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 in... My understanding in, in, in that particular code, now, I think legal, and we, we kinda went back and forth in this, and that's our understanding of what the law says.
So this would, a rental property, a residential rental property would qualify for this ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
So if you have an individual who owns multiple rental properties and are letting them run down...
Right.
This ordinance would be able to be used to address a situation like that.
Okay, so step by step, Dave, we're getting there. Thank you. Alright, do we have any other comments on this issue? Any other comments? Do others like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, I declare, uh, I declare this, um, this hearing to a close and we will do the second hearing next month on July 25th.
Yes, sir.
At the evening meeting. So, thank you Dana. Oh, we got a comment, I'm sorry.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just, Dana and I had a, um, long meeting today and I just wanna kind of address ECCA's concerns about building height. Um, some of the stuff we talked about, and I know that, I mean, in my meetings with them, we've talked about the fact that a person could come in, raise the elevation of the property, then have the 10-foot, um, basement, and then start measuring. Um, you're gonna see some significant changes, I know the board talked about it yesterday also. Um, some of that wasn't clear, that was kinda addressed towards sloping property. Um, but we're gonna work on kinda getting it back down to what's consistent with the neighborhood. So there will be some big changes to that in the second draft.
The ordinances which have been proposed were addressed yesterday in work session and a lot of the concerns that were addressed by speakers today were also, um, addressed by commissioners. And I wanted to address a couple, that, um, there are some commissioners, particularly with the vehicle parking on gravel, who are supportive of us looking at that on a case-by-case or individual basis as the speaker shared. Ideally through the permit or land use permit process, so we've asked for community development to look at that option as we propose that. There are some comments also with respect to the open space community and, um, there were some comments shared that there could be many ways to look at open space communities. I know particularly in District 4, when we've had community discussions regarding open space, residents have desired for open space to protect, um, the land so it can be used recreationally. And that would mean excluding, um, property where the slopes are over 25%. However, it has been shared in the past that sometimes our open space communities are used to protect buffers and more natural areas. So an idea shared was to look at how we can perhaps separate our, um, options under open space code, where one could apply towards more of a recreational open space community or what was referred to in the past as a planned residential development PRD, and, and look at bringing that back. And then perhaps having another open space designation, open space community designation as environmental. And finally, with, um, respect to the commercial, excuse me, I may have the, Community Redevelopment Tax Incentive Program. This, um, well, this code was, um, was supported by me because of the number of challenges that we have with properties in the district. This was not viewed as a tool to use to take property and redevelopment, and, excuse me, and redevelop it for commercial purposes, but just to clean up our community and improve any instances of, of neglect that's on it. So your concerns with respect to property owners is not on deaf ears and we wanna be sensitive to those who are invested in our community. But we've got to be more creative about addressing problems that have been allowed to persist over time, as was shared by one of our speakers, Mr. Birkenbine, that just have not been addressed with the current tools that we have. We appreciate your feedback and certainly want you to know that we are not trying to cause any detriment to those, um, who are living in our community and haven't invested themselves there over time. And those who may, who may need help financially to help take care of their properties. These are for people who own properties more on a commercial basis, or they don't live in them and they've been using it as, perhaps for income purposes and just have not been taking care of them as they should.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Burl?
Thank you. Um, yes, at work session yesterday, we did have some good discussion and suggestions among the board, but we also wanna hear from the public. And for the ones who couldn't be here tonight, um, if you go to CobbCounty.org, go to the Community Development page, there is, um, a section for the code amendments and for you to give us your feedback. So you can email all of us or your Commissioner and we'll get the suggestions to everyone up here. And we do want your input and suggestions. So, um, you've got a month to do that, to give us some good food for thought and we appreciate your input.
Commissioner Weatherford? You good? Okay. Alright, I think we're good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're gonna go to, uh, tab six now, which is public hearing, and here's how we're gonna do this. I know, how many do we have tonight, Bill?
We have six to sign up for section.
We have six and six?
Not quite six, four looks like.
Alright, so here's what we're gonna do. I think it's important that we hear, we hear the public comment. So first I'm gonna fine Commissioner Weatherford $25 for using my phone.
You've got three pairs of glasses, you can't find your phone.
And then, we're gonna, we're gonna do the, we're gonna do the public comment, and then after the public comment, then we're gonna take a short break, okay? So is everybody good with that? Alright, good, alright. So with that, uh, Bill, why don't you call the first public speaker?
Uh, Craig Casillas.
I hate reading these things. Good evening. Mr. Chairman, last time I was here, you deflected my questions to the county attorney. With respect, county attorney wasn't elected on a platform of openness and transparency. Um, and what I'm trying to learn is the thought process that led to this clause being disregarded. This is the deal here. There are a number of properties that could, or projects that very well could have been applied to this list. There's no evidence that, that anything was done, that any deliberations, there was no list. But before that vote was taken, um, a Commissioner left. Commissioner Ott left to do what his office considers to be a mandatory photo op in Cumberland. But before he left, he took a shot at me and I'm here to defend myself, Mr. Chairman. Two points he made. One was the Braves Bridge. There was discussion about the number of parking spots that are available at the, or at the, uh, at the Galleria. First of all, the 38% figure was made up. Now, how do I say this? Why do I say this? Because I asked. There was no discussion with the Galleria about parking prior to the ARC. No discussion. And when are these parking lots or parking spaces available? When they decide. Second point you brought up was Windy Hill. Second point the Commissioner brought up was Windy Hill and Terrill Mill. Now, this created a fiction, a facade that there was a discussion about this clause when there wasn't. There's no evidence of that taking place. So, you wanna discard Windy Hill, Terrill Mill? I'd be all for that. What about Interstate North Parkway? Do you have anything? Thank you.
Sure. Now, Greg, one question for clarity. Are you talking about Windy Hill and Terrill Mill meaning the, the Divergent Diamond Interchange?
If you look at the, if you look at the document, you'll see that there's nothing in there about whether it was prior to the deal or after the deal.
Okay.
And in fact, the reason I'm bringing this up is because we heard during the discussion for both of those projects, that it's going to increase, as it says here, to accommodate access. So we've heard a number of projects, in fact, pretty much every project that's been built in Cumberland for the next, for the last three years, has been said to improve access. Therefore, they should qualify. You can't have it both ways, sir.
I just wanna make sure that when you said Windy Hill and Terrill Mill...
That's correct. Those are, if you see, it says move, realign existing roadways.
Oh, I got you, okay. Alright, okay. Just wanna make sure I understand what you're talking about.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you very much, as always.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jennifer Walton?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Walton. I'm the Director of Operations for the Davis Direction Foundation. Please enjoy the video of the Zone. It's the Cobb County's first and only recovery community organization and national model.
I knew that wasn't me, you know? I knew the decisions I made weren't, weren't, I wasn't acting on my true personality, I was acting on the personality drugs created. And from that point, I said, you know, I'm never gonna be that person again, you know? And I decided to change my life.
I finally got to that point and that place and that dark spot that I was scared and I didn't wanna be there anymore.
Every day I wake up thinking, I thank God, that's the first thing I do is thank God for where I'm at, that I'm no longer where I was.
I didn't know about recovery, didn't have any clue about it. I've been to the rehab, so I've been to the treatment and the meetings and all that, and it didn't change anything. I had been sober before, but I'd never been in recovery. And once I found the Zone, it just showed me a whole nother lifestyle that was out there that essentially was the exact opposite of what I'd always known to be normal life.
organization that helps support people in recovery. It's a safe and sober environment that helps people seek, maintain, support, or enjoy long-term recovery free from substance use disorder.
As a veteran, trying to find help's not the easiest thing, um, but you come into the Zone, helps you see that, you know, there's other people fighting the same fight you're fighting.
What's special about the Zone is that it is so unique in this area. There's never been anything like this around here. You don't have to go back to the same people, places, and things. You have a new place, you have a new family, a new friend set, and a new future altogether. It's, that entire network is what creates that future and that's what makes up recovery.
I found hope. I found hope in the community of recovery. I found hope in the people who are willing to be there for me and hug me and love me. I found hope. We need that community to be close together. And I find that here at the Zone.
The Davis Direction Foundation was started in March of 2014 after the fatal overdose death of my son, Davis. Um, he died of a heroin overdose and my family and I got together after his death and just decided that, that it should have never happened. So the premise behind the Zone was that it would be a home for people who needed to have a home.
Cases when you're suffering from drug addiction, you know, it's hopeless, you know, and you can't, you, you don't, it's almost like you don't wanna see the light or something, like it doesn't exist. And when you come to a place like this, it's like the light exists, you know? That's what I like about it.
We lead with love, we lead with compassion, and we give them the support and the resources that they need to become successful in whatever areas and arenas they choose.
My name is Kenneth Cray and I'm in long-term recovery.
Hi, I'm Jason, I'm a person in long-term recovery.
Hi, my name is Sheree and I am a person in long-term recovery. And what that means to me is December 3rd, 2013, I was free from a life of sad and addiction and remorse and regret. I'm free from all that today. And I'm here to say that recovery works.
The next speaker is Vic Reynolds.
He needs no introduction. Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By the way, I have an extra pair of glasses in my pocket if you need them, so...
I'll take them.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you. I'll be very brief. When Missy Owen asked me to speak on behalf of the Zone, I was very honored, very humbled. It's a program that I have, uh, deep faith in and I've seen firsthand as the district attorney, the good work they do there. I don't have to tell each one of you that we're in the midst of a heroin opioid epidemic in this country, in this state, and certainly in this county. And although we have, uh, and will continue to aggressively pursue and prosecute those individuals who distribute and traffic this poison to our community, the reality is that we cannot arrest our way out of this epidemic. We can't. And that's where, uh, an organization like the Zone comes into play. The good work that they do there is, is just unbelievable. It's a safe haven for those individuals that are in the midst of recovery. And, uh, I just wanted to take a moment, not only as the elected district attorney, but as a citizen of this county, to thank this board for the consideration and the graciousness that you've shown in working with the Zone. I would respectfully and, and humbly ask you to consider, uh, even more graciousness in the future. I, I commit to you and promise to you, based on what I've seen firsthand, that any benefit you extend to the Zone will be more than paid to this, uh, back to this county tenfold. So thank you again for, for your time. Thanks to Missy for all the work she does and for asking me to be a part of this. I'm very humbled and very honored by it and I appreciate all you've done for the Zone. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you.
Justin Jackson?
Chairman, boys and members of the board, uh, my name is Justin Jackson and I'm a person in long-term recovery. And actually, what that means to me is that it's been almost 18 months since I felt the need to use any mood or mind-altering substance. And that's all because of the Zone, to be perfectly honest with you. I started using when I was about 12 years old and through all those bad decisions and things that have changed in my life and, you know, good and bad, it landed me in the Veterans' Accountability Court program. And between that and the Zone, I've been able to change my life in ways that, that are not measurable. I'm able to be a good son, I'm able to be a good father, a grandson, a brother, a friend, all kinds of different things have changed. And between the Zone and like I said, the Veterans' Accountability Court, I've learned to cope with things that I never thought was possible. Um, I recently found out my father had cancer and a year ago, a year and a half ago, I would've, got high. No question in my mind. And instead I went to my group and talked to my sponsor and kept on moving like it was nothing. And with that being said, I'm not the only person that can do this. There's plenty of people at the Zone that do this every day. And that connection is the opposite of addiction, is, it's a great motto, because I see it happen every single day there. The, the connections we make, our recovery network growing, and then all of a sudden, hey, what's going on, buddy? They know that we love them, they know we care about them. They don't have to go find a drug to care about them. They come in there and they see us and then they actually progress in their lives. They become productive members of society. We're working on a reentry program, we have a music room, we have a computer lab, a gym, a game room, a coffee shop. We have all these things so people can connect and get back into society in a way that's actually giving back to our community. I'm lucky enough and fortunate to be an employee at the Zone. And I can give back to the community where I've taken for years and years and years. I don't think I'll ever be able to repay that debt, but with this opportunity that the Zone provides, I'll be able to give at least something back. And I, I can't explain to you what that connection does. I really can't. Without it, it would have never been possible for me. And I know that's true for a lot of other people. Thank y'all for letting me share.
That's a hard act to follow right there, but, um, I do wanna talk to you about the Zone. My name is Missy Owen, I'm the co-founder and CEO of the Davis Direction Foundation. And unfortunately, I'm the mother of a 2014 statistic, a son, my firstborn son, who died of a heroin overdose. Davis Henry Owen, he was aged 20. And, um, he was a wonderful young man, a senior class president, Hall of Fame in his high school. And he was a wonderful young man, a senior class president, Hall of Fame in his high school. He went on to become Dean's List, did over 1,000 hours of community service, and gave a graduation speech to over 3,000 people present at graduation. So when we talk about a stigma of addiction, I want you to know that we open our doors to everyone at the Zone, anyone who suffers with addiction. But I'd like for you to look at this model up here, and let me explain to you the problem. These numbers were out of the gracious heart of the medical examiner, Dr. Chris Gullidge, who is here tonight. And I thank him for sharing these numbers with us because they give us a great insight to what's going on in our county. And unfortunately, Cobb had the second highest opioid drug deaths in the state of Georgia. That's not a statistic that you want to be at the top of the list for, but unfortunately, we are. There were 133 times that opioid drugs were involved in overdose deaths in our county. That does not mean 133 deaths, but it means 133 times that opioids showed up in deaths. Some of those were multiple drugs in the same overdose. We have a problem in Cobb County, and we need to address it. The Zone provides a safe and sober environment for people to seek, maintain, support, and enjoy recovery free from substance use disorder. The Davis Direction Foundation, also housed at 32 North Fairground Street, addresses advocacy, prevention, education, and harm reduction. We keep people in recovery in recovery, and by doing so, we are giving back to the economy. That's good for the economy. In a frontline interview with former drug czar, Dr. Michael Botticelli, he stated that for every $1 the community invests in recovery or reentry, $7 is saved by keeping drug offenders out of the system. This past year, our lease expense took up 21% of our annual budget. A reduction in our lease, in our lease that we have with the county would allow the foundation to move beyond its startup model and invest more in service enhancements and premium programs while hiring high-impact employees commensurate with the demand we have seen. In this past year, we have had over $84,000 in leasehold improvements. We are taking care of our building. We have received all these improvements through donations and pro bono work. We have a working coffee shop that, by the way, will open tomorrow, and I'd like to invite all of y'all to come get a cup of coffee on me. And then by the end of the summer, we'll have a thrift store open that will maintain and sustain the efforts that we're doing. So we're doing everything that we can to help save lives and to help save our young people. And I might add that the, the majority of the people who are dying in this county are in their 20s and 30s. We are being robbed of our youth in this county, of our future in this county. At the Zone, we have connection, as Justin was telling you about, and these are just some of the services that we provide, to name a few. Job training, recovery meetings, recovery coaching, we have a workout gym, chiropractic services. We go to the jail and host meetings there. And the time that I tell you when we write individual recovery plans, and those people in the jails come straight out of the jail and into the Zone, that's just a day that we're all rejoicing because those are the people who will make the, their path straight into recovery. And that's just the service that we provide. We have a national model of building communities of recovery, as explained by Newt Gingrich at the National Heroin Summit this year. John Horn has, did invite us, and we spoke at the very first Atlanta Heroin Summit. Sam Olins has endorsed us, Vic Reynolds is our best friend. We have hosted seven symposiums as of this coming Thursday night, which I would love to invite all of you to. Vic will be one of our speakers there. It starts at 7 o'clock at Marietta Performing Arts Center. And since we've opened our doors to the Zone, we've had over 10,000 visitors, 10,000 visitors in six months' time. And A and E is doing a docu-series that will be released in early 2018 that will feature the Zone and highlight recovery because we are doing it right. We will be displayed nationally as a model that is doing things right. We're asking for a two-year reduction plan. In 2016, the Davis Direction Foundation entered into a three-year lease with 32 North Fairground Street property. It was a 21,000 square foot building that had been vacant for three years with only 32 parking spaces and two windows. We paid $63,000 in 2016 and 2017, July to July. Our proposal moving forward is to cut our lease in half, commencing July 27th, uh, July, I'm sorry, July 2017, cutting half to $31,500 a year. The return on the investment, according to Dr. Michael Botticelli, at a minimum would be $220,500 back into the county if you use his formula of $1 invested, put $7 back into the community. And then commencing on July of 2018, we would request for the DDF to pay utilities only while continuing to provide a life-saving benefit to this community because it's so desperately needed. We need to turn that second place around to second place from the bottom in our state.
Okay, Missy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Stephen George.
Hi, my name is Stephen George. I live in and incorporate Cobb County. And I'm here to speak on the drug whisperer phenomenon. In criminal law, Blackstone's formulation, also known as Blackstone's ratio, or the Blackstone ratio, is the principle that it is better that 10 guilty persons escape than one innocent suffer. Historically, the details of the ratio have varied, but the message that government and the courts must err on the side of innocence has remained constant in both English common law and the American legal system for 250 years. Indeed, at the federal level, the courts have used three standards when engaging judicial review of laws or executive action. Perhaps in the case of the drug whisperer phenomenon, it might be argued use of the strict scrutiny test because of fundamental rights are at stake, like those guaranteed in the Bill of Rights, might be used. To be acceptable under the strict scrutiny test, a standard or law or executive action must be justified by compelled, a compelling government interest, be narrowly tailored to meet the need, and be the least restrictive means by which to obtain the goal. Using this measurement criteria, perhaps the way the drug whisperer program is currently being operationalized in Cobb County might not pass said scrutiny test. How can taking people who have passed a Phil Sobriety Test to jail solely on the Jedi Knight skills of the drug recognition expert be the least restrictive means by which to obtain the goal of catching, prosecuting, and punishing DUI under the influence of marijuana? In fact, a very well-litigated case where the prosecution brought in its very best national experts, and the defense had funding and knowledge into the DRE program, the trial court quite clearly, quite clearly found the drug recognition expert program to be unscientific and unreliable. As a result, the evaluation and the conclusion was inadmissible. The findings of the court stated, "The DRE program protocol fails to produce an accurate and reliable determination of whether a suspect is impaired by drugs and what specific drug is impaired." The case citation is State of Maryland v. Charles, uh, Brightwood. An astonishing revelation from the bench, and this expert from the opinion goes, "Although the drug recognition program is utilized in 45 states, the presence of the DRE program does not equate to widespread judicial acceptance by appellate courts nor acceptance in the medical community." In fact, the source of the empirical data that was used in the case to invalidate the DRE tool came exclusively from the studies from the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, funded or indirectly funded, so it's their own research that objectively invalidates the tool. A liaison from the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration has testified that in addition to the widespread discretion in what weight might be given to the indicators of the matrix, the DRE is not even required to complete the 12-step protocol to reach an opinion, as those steps are merely preferred. Not only that, even if no drugs are found in the subject's blood, the DRE is not going to change their opinion after you get the blood, in that they would be, uh, they are limited on the, uh, what the lab can test. So in essence, the basic question is, is it legitimate to suppose that an evaluation of a total stranger at one time and one time only, without knowing any relevant pharmacological or physical history of the evaluate by a very minimally trained, non-credentialed clinical professional who has never done clinical rounds, never dosed anyone, and has no clinical experience could be valid? Moreover, the nice, uh, the horizontal gaze nystagmus test has serious flaws in it. For one thing, there are 38 medical conditions unrelated to alcohol or drugs which can cause horizontal nystagmus. One of these is traumatic brain injury, of which I have been diagnosed with. Further, experts have criticized the administration of this test by police officers who are not ophthalmologists-trained in the detection of eye movements or eye pathologies. Having said that, I believe we're, as a county, are facing huge fiduciary liability. If we, uh, basically, I believe what we have here is in some instances, an overly aggressive police tactic being used improperly. How else can three people that I saw on TV pass all the Phil Sobriety Tests, still be arrested, pass the drug test, and then still, the department says that they stick by the, the arrest? That, to me, that is not what we're about as Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, that completes the opening speakers.
That's it?
For the, for the opening round, yes, sir.
Oh, let's do the finished ones. We're gonna do all of them, and then we're gonna take the break.
Mr. Birkenbaum.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. I guess we're just gonna repeat, repeat, and keep repeating. On the quick reference on the medical burn ban, we have certain types of fires are allowed all year round during the burn ban. It's not the medical burn ban, it's the statewide burn ban. So then we can go down to the medical burn ban and the restricted areas. They're not restricted, it's a ban. It's constantly a ban. There's, there's, nobody said it was a restricted area when the people applied for their medical burn ban so they could breathe. And the next line is, "Even though we follow all the directions and all the guidelines for burning, you may be required to extinguish the fire if it adversely interferes with another's enjoyment of life, use of property, or if someone with a health problem is affected." And then we go to the next one. The Fire Marshal shall, in a geographical area, taken, uh, we need one more, on the second page. Yeah. "The Fire Chief shall authorize the ban outdoor burning in a limited geographical area upon receipt of a medical documentation from a resident that the resident has a medical condition adversely affected with smoke, by smoke, which is in the prohibitions." Not a restriction, it's in the prohibitions. Then the exceptions to the burning prohibitions, the Fire Marshal shall issue an open burn permit. "Warrant exceptions to prohibitions against burning special circumstances would include..." Well, special circumstances, somebody helps is a special circumstance to those people. Not a special circumstance to let somebody burn a fire pit, uh, burn the chimneys, or whatever they want to do to prevent smoke. If you notice in Cobb County, there isn't anybody that can burn wood without it smoking, sitting there in the smoldering or doing anything else. Then we go to the, uh, next one, the definition of outdoor burning. Outdoor burning means killing or maintaining a fire where the products of combustion are emitted directly into the ambient air without passing through a chimney or stack, into the air. I mean, what more simpler is that? You're taking wood, whether it's clean or whatever, and it's, you're letting it into the air, and it affects the people with breathing problem. So I sent a update to Commissioner Chairman, I mean, to the chairman, I don't know if he got it or not. So I got tired of going to the emergency room and having the smoke removed, so I'm taking this out on my own real heavily here. I took the time and sent out 14 letters last, week before last, to people that have medical burn bans. I don't know if any of them responded back to y'all or not. I had one negative.
I got an answer.
I had one negative. She really put me through the hammer mill, how'd you get my address, how'd you do this, how'd you do that? So I'm gonna change to the resident of that address. Taught me a lesson, so. But all it is, is the, uh, I sent out a pamphlet, got support for medical burn ban. It's got my name, my COPD number. What I, what I want them to do is to call y'all and the chairman, uh, gives them y'all's numbers, then gives them the dates of Commissioners' meetings, and then gives all the meeting dates that I've talked to if they want to see what, see what I'm all about. But I'm going to accomplish this however long it takes, and it doesn't make any difference. So we have to get, we have to get behind the medical people. As far as I'm concerned, if you want to talk about discrimination, people with a chronic disease is being discriminated against because you are not giving them the full benefit of the medical burn ban that they deserve. And that's not right. You wouldn't do it to a person in a wheelchair or anything else, so, thank you.
Monica Delancey.
Good evening. My name is Monica Delancey, and I would like to address Riverside Community. First, I'd like to brag about Riverside Intermediate School. Riverside Intermediate School is in Mapleton, Georgia, is in District Four. Last Saturday, Riverside Intermediate School allowed for our State of Our Schools Committee to host a parent leadership summit. That school opened their building on a Saturday when they're out for the summer. We were very impressed by the number of parents and community stakeholders that attended the event. They were able to learn about parent leadership opportunities, they were able to learn about special need services, as well as scholarship opportunities. So I wanted to brag about Riverside Intermediate School. Some other concerns with Riverside Intermediate School is that majority of the residents who's trying to attend Riverside Intermediate School are renters. Majority of the renters pay for a two-bedroom apartment, which is the majority of the apartments in the area. The rent averages between $600 to $800 a month. That's more than 40% of household incomes that pay their, pay their income on rent. In addition to that, I do know that homeowners who pay, who have three-bedroom, four-bedroom homes don't even have their mortgage to be $800. Some other concerns we have for the issues as well, for the errors that, um, in the last five years, there's been five apartment complexes that have been sold twice, sold twice. That means that when they come in, they say they're gonna be committed, they want to be a part of the reinvestment, they want to engage in the community, but then they only keep the property less than 18 months, and then they sell it again. So in five years, that's five properties. Three of those properties at one time had an after-school program, but that has no longer exists. So when we say what our schools are doing, we have to demand that our businesses do what our schools are doing. Our schools are committed, our teachers work hard, our parents are committed. But the businesses who are the biggest business for that area are not committed to the community. businesses who are the biggest business for that area are not committed to the community. So when they come to you saying they're gonna buy an apartment complex, or they're gonna do these things, we must be purposeful in saying what we'd like for them to do to be committed to the community. Now, we do know that our schools are not one-size-fits-all. Some people wanna choose to send their children to private schools, but then we need to ask those people to still come back to the schools and volunteer. Even though your children are going to private schools, you still live in the area. So something you should be doing, being a partner, you be in partnership with the schools as well. So, um, so what can we do, and what can you do, is demand that our business, our apartment complex, which is the biggest business for that area, be partners with our communities, be partners with our schools, um, because the state of our schools is the state of our community. Thank you very much.
Uh, Amy Barnes?
I am Amy Barnes, I am a resident of Marietta, and I am here to speak about the Drug Whisperer Program. My, my reasoning on this program is a simple question. If, say, you face a 25% chance of cancer from taking one particular drug, and you have a whole spectrum of other options available, would you take that drug? I'm betting that the answer would be no. There was a study done on the effectiveness of DRE programs, and I know this is getting old, um, but the reality is arrests are not something that can be easily scrubbed. Arrests are impossible to scrub from a person's background. When someone is falsely arrested for drug DUI, they face unemployment because employers are now, um, using what they call court checks to check for a case. So if a case is dismissed, that case still has a wide-ranging impact that can affect someone's housing options, it can affect their employment options very negatively, um, it can cause, um, what is it called, uh, Child Protective Services involvement. Many apartment communities, uh, thanks to the Weed and Seed Program, are now, um, able to immediately proceed with eviction based on arrests. Now, the problem really lies where some of these cases may take up to a year to get dismissed. So if somebody is evicted based on their arrest for alleged drug DUI, that can be a whole year of their time that which they face the uncertainty of an outcome in a court system where it's a 97% conviction rate. And with drug DUI, there's no evidence other than behavior indicators. Um, I can, I can drive Uber, I can moonlight Uber, and I can watch my passenger's lips and see them saying in the backseat that their brother, their cousin, their uncle has gotten busted on allegations of drug DUI falsely. Now, if I can come across four people in one night who are victimized, now mind you, if someone gets arrested, it's not that person that's affected, uh, no, it's their entire community, it's everyone that they touch, it's their family that spreads the word about an unjust arrest, it's the reputation of the police on the line. Um, so this whole cascade of effects takes place after this one arrest. And when I see, um, this arrest statistic coming up and up and up with Lieutenant Carroll's three people that he pulled aside, that's three people in one shot, in one news story, three people who are completely innocent, who've never done drugs. Now, that scares me, as I'm a driver, I'm a holder of a license in this county, that gives me a very high risk of driving down the county roads, because I am deafened, I face allegations of DUI, I've blown straight zero on the readers, I face allegations of being high, because I myself have a brain injury. Um, I, I have problems with maintaining a steady gaze because one of my eyes is a lazy eye. I am in fear when I drive down those roads, and it makes me angry to see these stories of innocent people just being ripped off of our roadway. You know, we have the ability to have a person park their car, and we have the ability to have that person, like City of Atlanta does, to call an Uber or a Lyft. There are other alternatives than arresting people's way out of a car. We have a whole plethora of opportunities. We can have a family member come down and take over that car. If it is such a severe problem with drug DUI and behavioral indicators, well, I'm sorry, but the liability is just too huge. Now, all I've gotta ask is, how many people does it take to get together and concoct a class-action lawsuit for a mandamus for an injunctive relief against this program? If the failure rate is 25%, then we have a definite liability on our hands, financial and life-wise.
Uh, Roger Burkey? Roger Burkey?
Had to appear in costume for the last time. Just turned 77, and I think I'm going to retire, so, yes, I'm afraid so. So two miles of Powers Ferry Road will not, will no longer be the cleanest road in the county. I have something to bring to your attention. Among all the beer cans and, beer cans and cigarette butts and whatever that I pick up, a week ago, up at Powers Ferry and Delk, I collected five bags like this, full of medical waste. This is a collection of surgical gloves, bloody gauze, uh, interesting stuff. Uh, fortunately, I have good skin, and I didn't catch anything from it, but it was littered for 100 yards down the road, hundreds of items. Luckily, it was early on a Sunday morning, and I got it picked up before much traffic came along. So I think I know where it came from, I think you do too, if it appeared right at that corner, because there's a little clinic there on that corner. I will speak to them, but you might also. Among other items, of course, uh, stuff that evidently falls off garbage trucks, and I clean that up as well. And, uh, given the earlier testimony here, occasionally, about once a month or so, I'll find a syringe on the road, which is kind of interesting. And I also clean up signs, uh, I see a lot of this, I remove those. They make, uh, they come in handy in political campaigns, I make use of them. And I want to reuse this sign. I think you all know what this was about. I still bear a grudge against the Braves, and, uh, I still harbor somewhat of a grudge against some of you, not Ms. Cupid, of course, because she was on the right side of that particular issue, but, uh, I know some of you feel that billionaire ball club owners really need a break now and again. So I hope you, you will, uh, consider finally funding all of the money we voted for on this occasion. You see, that does represent a vote. I'm still waiting, I hope you'll come through for us.
Thank you, Roger.
Chairman, there aren't enough further speakers.
Okay, with that, we'll take a, um, five-minute break. You're welcome, buddy. Thank you, take a short recess. We're back in session now, and, somebody moved my tabs. Tab seven? Yes, so on tab seven, which is the consent agenda. So I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
I have a second, any question, any discussion? Then we'll call a question. Passes five to zero. And for users at home, uh, watching online, we're just gonna scroll down here so you can see what the consent agenda items are, and you'll also be able to read, see them at, uh, CobbCounty.org. All right, now we're gonna go to tab eight. And, uh, transportation?
Good evening again, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. We have 13 items tonight. Our first item is to approve Change Order Number One Final to the Resurfacing Contract 2014-1, Countywide Major Thoroughfareish Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., for resurfacing of county-maintained roads and for construction of the Floyd Road Sidewalk. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2011 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Floyd Road Sidewalk is an approved pedestrian improvements project in the 2005 SPOSS TIP. Resurfacing and construction are complete, and Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Baldwin, uh, combined savings to the project in an amount of $942,015.91 is requested due to variations between the original and final plan quantities. The project savings associated with the resurfacing efforts in an amount not to exceed $902,183.66 will be retained in the resurfacing component of the 2011 SPOSS TIP, uh, TIP Fund. The project savings associated with Floyd Road Sidewalk in an amount not to exceed $28,031.70 will be retained in the sidewalk component of the 2005 SPOSS TIP Fund. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Resurfacing Contract 2014-1, Countywide Major Thoroughfareish Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a combined savings to the project in the amount of $942,015.91 for the resurfacing of county-maintained streets and for construction of Floyd Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, so moved.
You have a second? We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? And it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number two is to approve Change Order Number One Final to the 2016 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., for emergency drainage system repairs to a segment of Compton Drive. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete, and Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $7,703.25 is requested due to variations between the original and final plan quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the 2016 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $7,703.25 for emergency drainage system repairs for a segment of Compton Drive.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number three is to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County School District for school zone improvements on John Ward Road at Irwin Road, Cheatham Hill Elementary School. John Ward Road at Irwin Road, Cheatham Hill Elementary School is an approved project in the school zone improvements component of the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The Cobb County School District has agreed to fund the school site portion of the project in an amount not to exceed $23,989.41. The Department will include the Cobb County School District improvements in the county contract for John Ward Road and Irwin Road improvements to be awarded at a later date. We request the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County School District in an amount not to exceed $23,989.41 for schools on improvements on John Ward Road at Irwin Road, Cheatham Hill Elementary School.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Uh, motion to approve, as presented.
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? Call a question? And it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County School District again for roadway improvements on Old 41 Highway Main Street at North Cobb High School. Old 41 Highway Main Street is an approved roadway safety and operational improvement project in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the City of Acworth. Cobb County School District has agreed to fund the school site portion of the project in an amount not to exceed $18,268.20. The Department will hold, will include the Cobb County School District improvements in the county contract for the Old Highway 41, oh, 41 Highway Main Street improvements to be awarded at a later date. We request the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County School District in an amount not to exceed $18,268.20 for roadway improvements on Old 41 Highway Main Street at North Cobb High School.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve, sir.
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is to approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Marietta for Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements. Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements, also known as Cheatham Hill Multi-Use Trail, is an approved thoroughfare and mobility improvements project in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the City of Marietta. The Cobb Framework Agreement details the responsibilities of both the city and the county. For the terms of this, of the CFA, for this project, the county will be responsible for funding 67% of the total project cost, while the city will be responsible, so, responsible for funding 33% of the total project cost. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Marietta for the Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion approved, sir. This is a great project, so, thank you.
Second.
You have a second?
Can I just make a comment, um, only because I asked the question about this, um, yesterday? Just so folks understand, the next agenda item that Jim's gonna read is gonna list the actual total amount of the project, and it doesn't break it down, um, the city's portion and the county's portion, and the reason for that is because the item we're just getting ready to vote on spells out how it's divided out. So it might be a little bit confusing if people aren't looking at both together.
Okay, I appreciate you bringing up that clarity, thank you. Any further discussion? Call a question?
If I'm, if I may, um, talk about this project real quick, we were just awarded last week all four millions, uh, four million in our flat grant application that we requested from the federal government. So we're well on our way. Uh, thank you, sir. Item number six, to approve a consultant service agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc., for engineering design of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements. Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements, also known as Cheatham Hill Multi-Use Trail, is an approved thoroughfare and mobility improvements project in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint proj, project with the City of Marietta. The Department has negotiated a final scope of services and fee with Heath and Lineback, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $704,467.50 for engineering design of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $704,467.50 for engineering design of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements.
Uh, Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, and as Mr. I said, this is the second part of that same project, and uh, it's great that we've been awarded some additional funds to help it come to fruition. Motion approved, as presented.
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to approve Supplemental Agreement Number One, the Consultant Services Agreement with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates, Inc., for additional engineering design of Dallas Highway at Lost Mountain Road, Morris Hill Road. Dallas Highway at Lost Mountain, uh, Road, Morris Hill Road is an approved intersection improvements project in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Supplemental Agreement Number One to the contract with Kimley Horn is requested to provide logical termini, or time points along Lost Mountain Road and Morris Hill Road which will increase the current project limits. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Supplemental Agreement Number One to the Consultant Services Agreement with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $133,658 for additional engineering design of Morris Hill, uh, Dallas Highway at Lost Mountain Road, Morris Hill Road.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Yes, sir. Another much-needed project that we need to get started in that intersection is, uh, in dire need of it, motion approved, as presented.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? It passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number- Item number eight is to approve project number X 2742-TO number 01 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Southeastern Engineering, Inc., for engineering design of McPherson Road Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number E 2742-TO number 01 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Southeastern Engineering, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $119,309 for engineering design of McPherson Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner Otte?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is a joint project, started with Commissioner Burle, and then has moved over to District Two, and she has graciously agreed to share the costs of the project divided between the two of us, so motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. This next item is to approve project number X 2745-TO number 02 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Moreland Out to Belly Associates for engineering design of Bell's Ferry Road Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X 2745-TO number 02 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Moreland Out to Belly Associates in an amount not to exceed $76,400 for engineering design of Bell's Ferry Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner Burle?
I would like to make a motion to approve and also state that this is a very long overdue project, and it will be a great connectivity to the Noonday Creek Trailhead on Bell's Ferry as well.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to authorize payment for construction monitoring fee associated with facility enhancement agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., for advanced transportation management systems, intelligent transportation system communications design Phase One. Advanced Transportation Management System, ATMS, is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Upgrading the intelligent transportation system is an important component of this project. The department has been notified that a construction monitoring fee in an amount not to exceed $1,500 is required to complete the installation of the fiber optic cable of this project. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize payment of a construction monitoring fee associated with the facility encroachment agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $1,500 for advanced transportation management system, intelligent transportation system communications design Phase One.
Commissioner Otte?
Motion to approve.
I'm not going to try to repeat all that.
Yeah, I barely got it out myself.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is authorized procurement of intelligent transportation system communication field switches for advanced transportation management system. Advanced Transportation Management System is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, and planning component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Upgrading the intelligent transportation system is an important component of this project. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of intelligent transportation systems, communication field switches at a cost not to exceed $319,361.80 for advanced transportation management system.
Commissioner Otte?
In layman's terms, we're going to put some fancy stuff out on the polls to make it all work better. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Call a question? I'm just really assured that we're going to buy intelligent equipment as opposed to non-intelligent.
We are. And the field switches, just as a side note, these field switches are an upgrade. If you'll remember last year, it's spring break last year, and once during the summer, we had what's called a data storm in the system where we lost 100 signals, over 100 signals that went to flash. This stuff will prevent that from happening in the future.
Oh, okay.
All right, sir. Our next item is to approve project number X 2502-TO number 02 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Kimley Horn and Associates for traffic engineering services for design of advanced transportation management systems, intelligent transportation systems communications, Phase 1C, 2 and 3A. Advanced Transportation Management Systems is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, and planning component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. The department's ATMS includes a regional transportation center on intelligent transportation systems and incorporating traffic signal management systems, closed surface television cameras for traffic surveillance, fiber optic cable systems, and traveler information systems. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X 2502-TO number 02 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Kimley Horn and Associates in an amount not to exceed $346,692 for traffic engineering services for the design of the advanced transportation management systems, intelligent transportation service communications Phases 1C, 2 and 3A.
Commissioner Otte?
And...
Put that in layman's terms.
These are the guys that know how to make all those parts that were just approved work. And they're going to design the system to make it all work really well.
Then I'll second that one.
Motion to...
We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our final item is to approve change order number two to the contract with Adaptive Microsystems LLC for Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs. Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, and planning component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program, and is designated as State PI number 0015204. Change order number two, in an amount not to exceed $106,503.33, is requested to purchase three additional lane assignment dynamic message signs to include a contract time extension through December 1st, 2017, as recommended by the transportation management plan for SunTrust Park special events. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two to the contract with Adaptive Microsystems LLC in an amount not to exceed $106,503.33 for Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs, and approve a contract time extension through December 31st, 2017.
Commissioner Otte?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And I know this says on here that it's for transportation management for SunTrust Park events, but I think anyone that's driven through the area, regardless of whether there's an event at SunTrust Park or not, all of these dynamic message signs that the county has put in place have really improved the traffic flow on Cumberland and Spring Road and 41. So it says SunTrust Park, but the reality is it's really kind of improving the traffic in the area at all times. So motion to approve.
Okay, just one comment. I think we talked about this earlier, about some of those signs down there are not working very well.
There's one. It's one.
Is that the same company that's making these?
It is.
So what...
We're not going to pay them until that one's fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
But we want to make sure that the signs all work. Doesn't do any good to have signs that partially don't work, so...
Absolutely.
We'll be watching this one real closely, because...
Yeah, it's the one sign we keep talking about, right?
It is, right. But I do police ride-alongs, and that sign's been off and on now for a while, so...
It's been off and on. Every time we've gotten it fixed, it's gone back out, and what this project does is actually replaces the three next static signs along that same mastar.
All right, but for the amount of money we're spending on these signs, we should expect quality work.
Absolutely.
And I do think that we need to, we can approve this, but we need to make sure that other signs fix before they get full payment.
So we're on record here on video and everything. We need to be watching that sign, okay? Okay, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Okay, call a question? It passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, go to tab nine now. Public Services. Hello, Helen?
Hello. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, we ask you to approve the renaming of the East Marietta Library to the Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center. Currently, construction is underway on the existing site for a new joint-use facility which will house the library in a very unique cultural and performing arts center, replacing the existing East Marietta Library. Much consideration, including the community it serves, was given in determining a potential name for this new facility. Given its proximity to Sewell Park, the historic Sewell Mill Ruins, Old Sewell Mill Road, or Old Sewell Road, and Sewell Mill Creek, it is recommended by the Library Board of Trustees and the staff to name this new joint-use facility the Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center. So we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the renaming of the East Marietta Library to the Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center.
Commissioner Otte?
I make a motion to approve renaming the East Marietta Library to the Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center, and I agree, I mean, you know, East Marietta, yes, it may be East Marietta, but the reality is, I think that this name better reflects the character and the historic natures of the area.
It does.
We have a second? We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? And it passes five to zero.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our first item this evening is for the Board to rescind a previously awarded contract with Atlantic Building Specialties for the repair and renovation of the restrooms and sanitary sewer piping at the Mountain View Community Center, and to award a contract to AB Construction and Development LLC for the same work. Even though the insurance requirements were clearly listed in the bid documents, Atlantic Building Specialties was not able to meet these requirements. Therefore, we're asking the Board to rescind the previous awarded contract with Atlantic Building Specialties and approve a contract with AB Construction and Development LLC in an amount not to exceed $96,950 for the repair and renovation of the restrooms and sanitary sewer piping at the Mountain View Community Center under the 2016 Park SPOS Program.
Commissioner Burle?
Yes. I would like to make... I'd like to make a motion to approve. And...
Go ahead.
One comment. Can you tell us, the next item is for the roofing, but can you tell us when the timeframe for closing the community center to make all of these repairs and improvements?
It has just gone dark.
Okay.
And it'll be dark through the 1st of October, so we have plenty of time to get all of these renovations done.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second?
I need to put that in my newsletter, again.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Further discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Our final item this evening is for the Board to approve a contract with Horizon Roofing to replace the roof and gutter system at the Mountain View Community Center under the 2016 Park SPOS Program. The current roof on the center is the original roof placed on the building when it was constructed in 1990. It's been patched and repaired several times through the years, and it's obviously outlived its reasonable service life. Seal bids were received from four firms, and the lowest responsive bidder was Horizon Roofing. Therefore, we're asking the Board to approve a contract with Horizon Roofing in an amount not to exceed $64,027 to replace the roof and gutter system at the Mountain View Community Center as part of the 2016 Park SPOS Program.
Commissioner Burle?
Motion to approve.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Property Manager has a joint request with Information Services and the Sheriff's Office for replacement of the judicial complex touchscreen control system. The touchscreen control system allows the Sheriff's Office to monitor and record off-camera activity, dress buttons, door controls, intercoms, and card access in a judicial complex. It is six years old and has reached its expansion ability, which limits property management from adding additional security equipment required for upcoming renovation projects. Building security emergency life safety upgrades is an eligible capital improvement program under the 2016 SPOS Services Facilities Improvements. Funding is available in the 2016 SPOS Building Security Project Budget. We request the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Black Creek Integrated Systems Corporation in the amount of $361,154 for the replacement of the touchscreen control system at the Juvenile Court, 32 Wattell Street, Superior Court South, 30 Wattell Street, State Court, 12 East Park Square, Superior Court, 70 Hayne Street, Administration Building, 10 East Park Square, and Public Safety Building, 185 Roswell Street, all located in Marietta. Authorizes corresponding budget transition and further authorize the Chairman to execute necessary documents.
Commissioner Burle?
Motion to approve.
We have a second? Any discussions? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know if the Board realizes this, but no, don't go anywhere yet. This is his first time doing an agenda item in front of the Board.
You should leave now while you're ahead.
Dresses up pretty well.
Thanks, Scott. Here comes trouble.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. The agenda item tonight is to approve the purchase of hardware engineering and installation services associated with adding a public safety tower site to the 800 megahertz radio system from the 2016 SPOS Program Funds Public Safety New Towers for Radio System Program X1011. The Public Safety E911 project tier of the 2016 SPOS includes the purchase and installation of three additional public safety tower sites. The current communication system was built in 1993. The findings in Smyrna areas have continued to see significant growth and development since this time. With the growth comes an increased demand on public safety first responders and an urgent need to improve the public safety communications coverage for this area. The proposed tower will be located at the 4800 block of Camp Highlands Road, Smyrna, Georgia, constructed for an amount not to exceed $2 million. The purchase of hardware engineering and installation services associated with adding a public safety tower site is listed on Georgia State Contract 980-280008. I would ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of hardware engineering and installation services associated with adding a public safety tower site to the 800 megahertz radio system in the amount of $200 with Mudroll Solutions, Inc., authorize the budget transfers and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Otte? I'm sorry, Commissioner Weatherford?
One correction, I think you said $200.
You did, and I was going to vote for that.
I would too, $2 million. I'm sure Philip back here would correct me.
I would like 20 towers. Motion to approve as amended.
As amended?
As amended.
We have a motion and a second?
We may look asleep, but we do hear everything.
Any further discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. You get one more shot.
All right, we'll try it again. The next agenda item is to approve the donation by Consult Invest, Inc., to Cobb County, a tax parcel located in Land Lot 546, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, for the construction of the previously mentioned public safety tower site for the 800 megahertz system as part of the 2016 SPOS Program. After significant research, the previously described parcel has been determined to be the best suited for the construction of a tower in order to maximize radio coverage. Consult Invest, Inc., has agreed to donate this land to Cobb County for the construction of the tower. I would ask that the Board approve the donation by Consult Invest, Inc., to Cobb County, a tax parcel located in Land Lot 546, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, for the construction of a public safety tower site for the 800 megahertz radio system, and to authorize the Chairman to execute all the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Yeah, motion to approve as presented. Thank you.
And could we, once we vote on this and if it's approved, I think a personal letter from me to whoever owns this would be in order?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanking them for their civic-minded support of our programs?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Can you give us a... Box amount address of Land Lot 16, whatever?
Yes, ma'am. It's the 4800 block of Camp Highlands. It's the back portion of the block.
Yeah, it's where the IVM is.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going on to tab 12 now.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Here tonight to present revisions to three policies. All three policies have been presented and recommended by the Compensation Committee. The first policy is the holiday policy, which is recommended to be revised to provide managers with the authority to pay holiday pay for graded part-time positions who would ordinarily be scheduled to work on an approved county holiday. The second, uh, policy revision is to the annual leave policy. This revision would allow the county manager to offer different vacation leave programs under annual leave for candidates who are experienced for key positions, based on their experience. And the last revision is to the sick leave policy, and this is to comply with the new Georgia Care Law that goes into effect July first, to amend the definition for immediate family with the provisions that are in the law.
Hey, Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
All right, tab thirteen now.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have two items. I'll be taking the first item and Mr. Hughes will be taking the second item. The first item, we're asked, I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to adopt a supplemental resolution supplementing the original TANs resolution and ratifying, confirming, authorizing, and approving, among other matters, the issuance and sale of the, by the county of its sixty million in original aggregate principal amount of Cobb County, Georgia's General Obligation Tax Anticipation Note Series twenty seventeen, the proceeds which will be used to pay current expenditures of the county in calendar year twenty seventeen and to pay the cost of issuance of the twenty seventeen TANs, the acceptance of the lowest confirming bid for the purchase of the twenty seventeen TANs, and thereby ratifying, approving the interest rate, maturity date, and payment terms of the twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen TANs within the approved parameters established by the original TANs resolution, the levy of the ad valorem tax upon all properties subject to the taxation for maintenance and operation purposes within the boundaries of the county in an amount sufficient to pay the principal and interest of the twenty seventeen TANs when due on November thirtieth, twenty seventeen, the substantive final form of, and the execution and delivery of the twenty seventeen TANs, the preparation, execution, delivery, distribution, and use of the official statement for the twenty seventeen TANs, the preparation and execution and delivery by the chairman and other appropriate county officials for all other necessary and appropriate documents, and the taking of all other necessary or appropriate actions to confirm, or to accomplish the purpose of the foregoing and all matters related thereto. So, I apologize for the recommendation, it was written by bond counsel and attorney, so, that was the best we could do. We got it down from twelve pages to about a page and a half.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Commissioner Weatherford summarize that.
Actually, I was gonna let Commissioner Oat summarize, he did so good well on the, on the traffic signal thing.
We got a really good rate for a lot of money, but it's not as much as it's been in the past.
Okay, motion approved as presented.
We have a second? We have a second? Any discussion? And the bottom line, this is just like a bridge loan, because we, we don't collect our revenues until later in the summer, early fall, to get us through to that.
Yes, sir, and as Commissioner Oat stated, we were in excess of a hundred million dollars annually, so this is down significantly.
Okay, all right, so, any further discussion? Call a question? And it passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Just wanna make sure everybody understands.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. This agenda item requests your board, the board's approval of a second amendment to the current agreement with Cobb Works, Inc. for the provision of employment and job training services with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Grant, uh, or Opportunity Act. By way of background, the county, in its capacity as a grant recipient of these funds, has contracted with Cobb Works to administer the employment and job trainings program. In June of two thousand fifteen, you approved a, the original agreement for, with Cobb Works to administer and operate this program, and in June of two thousand sixteen, approved a one-year extension to the program. Their request before you this evening, uh, asks that you admit, approve an amendment to the, a second amendment to the program that will cover the period from June, July first of this year to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. As part of the consideration of the side of this, this evening, staff has prepared some additional information, um, just highlighting the program cycles, the various funding streams associated with this program, as well as the percent of funds that have been expended. Additionally, the next chart just highlights some of the, the cost per customer breakdown for each of the various programs, um, the number of individuals that have been trained, uh, and the total training dollars that have been used, um, over, from, uh, July two thousand and fifteen to the end of, uh, this month. And then the last item that you've provided, hopefully you received an email with, from me with some additional information, that we have a summary of these, the program services that have been provided over the last five years. Uh, with me this evening is John Hilton, who's our Executive Director of Cobb Works, who can answer any questions that you may have. With that background, staff would recommend your approval.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve as, as delivered. We have a second. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hilton? I appreciate you coming up, staying up so late.
I, I just have a comment.
Sure.
I know the, the chairman and I went out to, um, one of the many graduations that they have out there, and, and the, the programs that John and his folks run are outstanding, especially, um, what I was impressed with was the various ages. There were some folks there that were, uh, a little bit older than some of the other ones, and, and I think that day, particular day, it was a hundred percent job placement.
Hundred percent job placement, and actually, we have an upcoming graduation on Friday. We'd invite you to come back again, uh, for any of you who haven't been to, uh, and that we're speaking specifically about our construction training program that we do in partnership with Cumberland Community Church, and we have eight female graduates with this twenty person cohort that we're graduating on Friday, which is the greatest number we've had so far.
Well, well, I apologize for having you come up, sir, but I thought it was important that the county sees what you do, rather than just, we, we had a lot of money around here, but sometimes it's important to highlight some of the programs that we do, and particularly programs that are really successful. So, I just thought, you know, it would be nice tonight to have the county, those online and also on record, to see what you have done and how much we appreciate it.
Absolutely, it's your money, we just administer it for you, and I think Michael and I are going to arrange in an upcoming work session, kind of more comprehensive presentation coming up in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Call a question?
I'll get you one.
And it passes five to zero. Thank you, Michael. Okay, um, we have no more public comment, thanks to my brilliant leadership on that arrangement. So, now, we're gonna be going to tab fifteens for appointments, and I'd like to, first of all, make a motion to approve the reappointment of Betsy Matterhorn to the Board of Family and Children's Services Post One. Have a, have a second, any discussion? Call a question? And it passes five to zero. And now, I'd like to have, uh, I'd like to announce the, the appointment of James Boyle to the Airport Advisory Board in Post One. I think, James, is he still here?
Still here.
Okay, well, please come up and get on television.
Hey, if you made it this far, you deserve it. We heard him, we heard him.
He's not walking too well.
Well, we want to appreciate you, you know, being involved in this program. We realize that your time is important, but it's, uh, it's just really commendable that you would take the opportunity to serve your county this way, so welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. And, um, Jim will be replacing Sean King, who, uh, who resigned, uh, the position. And my second announcement is the reappointment of Bill Hudson, H U T S O N, to the Kennesaw Hospital Authority. And then, finally, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Commissioner Burl.
These are just announcements. Don't recall it. Yes, um, I take the pleasure of announcing the appointment of Scott Chadwick to the Transit System Advisory Board, and, um, he replaces Eric Keel, and I'd like to thank Eric for his years of service and, um, volunteering in that capacity. Thank you.
Commissioner? And I'll go to public comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Cupid tonight.
Yes, my only comment is to wish everybody a very happy July fourth holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Weatherford?
He wasn't ready for that, huh?
I wanna personally thank Commissioner Cupid. I hope I can thank Commissioner Burl.
I, I take it Commissioner Cupid's five.
We know. Uh, I just wanted to, to briefly mention the day I had the pleasure going to North Carb Senior Center and having a summer cookout and, uh, leading the trivia contest. I learned a lot today. I learned that a panda roe is a bunch of owls, and that, uh, Mountain Dew was originated to mix with whiskey. So, I didn't know all those kind of things, and I knew that Ice Ice Baby came from Queen. I, I learned all those today, so it was a great day, and, uh, I got out there without, uh, getting tarred and feathered by the seniors, but it was a great day there, and that's all I have, happy fourth, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Burl?
You better set the timer, 'cause I have some very important announcements tonight, as always. I'd first like to start out by thanking the Lockheed Retirees Association for allowing me to speak with them this morning about all the exciting things happening in Cobb County and District Three. What a great group. Um, also, this morning, the chairman and I, and Jim Wilgus, DOT Director, are you back there? We, and Tracy Rathbone, uh, presented our, the, we accepted a joint award from the American Society of Highway Engineers for the two thousand and seventeen Project of the Year given to Town Center CID and Cobb DOT for their beautiful work on the Skip Span Connector. Initially, the project received the ASHE Local and Regional Award for Infrastructure. The project advanced to compete for the two thousand and seventeen National Project of the Year and won. Thank you to Cobb DOT Team and Town Center CID for all they do, and congratulations on our national award. Thank you. Okay, most of y'all probably know, last year, we, I started a program called Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets, and due to the donation of five thousand dollars from Superior Plumbing, we are pairing veterans, um, with our, with pets from our animal shelter. The adoptions are free, and this past Saturday, our eighth veteran adopted a cute German Shepherd puppy mix from the shelter, and, um, this is actually the veteran Tony Lee's brother, and I'd like to read, um, I'd like to read the email from Tony. He is, um, out of town, um, having some medical procedures done, and the puppy came up for adoption, and he had picked him out, um, via pictures on email. He had, uh, filled out a form and was, had applied for a dog as a veteran, and, um, they weren't available for adoption until Saturday, and he was out of town, um, having some medical, uh, procedures done. So, his brother picked him up for him, and I've been emailing back and forth with him and his wife and, and his brother, and I just wanna read, um, if I can get through this. Tony is a great guy, he goes to my church, and he is on our library board. He's, um, he's, he's a wonderful guy, he lives in Commissioner Cupid's, um, district, and she has appointed him to the library board, and he's served us well for many years. But, um, Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets had its most, had its most recent adoption from Dr. Tony Lee. Dr. Lee is in Houston and will return in mid-July. He is the new parent of Bobby, who is a German Shepherd mix, um, recent to the Animal Control. This is a picture of Tang Lee, Mr. Lee's brother, holding Bobby. Dr. Lee wrote us an email on, on June seventeenth about the Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets program. Thank you so much, Commissioner Burl. It is indeed very comforting to see my new buddy. You do not know how much he means to me. Thank you, Commissioner Burl, for your very caring, loving, and understanding of all the disabled vets that you're trying to help and to heal, one vet at a time. Sometimes life is extremely tough and has no meaning because of the physical, psychological, and mental pains and tortures which medications can't completely cure. Having a companion and great people like you, your staff, and your connections at the Cobb County Animal Control, we, the disabled vets, can at least find some hopes and reasons to fight for our survival one day at a time. May God bless and repay your kindness, Commissioner Burl, and others who work with you. Respectfully, Tony. Very heartwarming, and, uh, please keep him and his family in your prayers as he undergoes some surgery. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, I just have a couple more.
Sure, go ahead.
I know, I'm sorry, folks. Okay, let me see what I don't have. I only have twelve seconds. Okay, twenty forty Comp Plan Online, give us your feedback. Celebrate America by learning more about her history. Learn about the original thirteen colonies and the signers of the Declaration of Independence at the Georgia Room Open House at the Switzer Library. It starts July fifth, Wednesday, July fifth, at noon, and the program begins at seven P.M. For more information, visit CobbCat.org, and on July eighth, you can join the Wingman Motorcycle Club of Cherokee County as the Ride United to Honor the Life of Marine Lance Corporal Skip Wells will begin at Sprayberry High School at nine A.M., uh, twenty-two, twenty-five twenty-five Sandy Plains Road, and end at Southern Devil Harley Davidson in Cartersville. So, that's a, a great annual event that, um, they do, and I think Commissioner Weatherford's gonna be riding his motorcycle with them this year.
Right.
Aren't you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and last but not least, Happy Independence Day, celebrate with family and friends on Tuesday, July fourth. God bless America. I'm done.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna give you an extra minute for mentioning Commissioner Weatherford's name, so, I, I won't. Commissioner Oat?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple shout-outs. The first one is Cobb County's Fleets was named the number six fleet among the leading fleets at Government Fleet Expo and Conference on June thirteenth. The operation was chosen for showing leadership with staff, with customers, and within the community, staying efficient and competitive, overcoming challenges, and having a vision and direction for the operation. Just to give you an idea of, um, some of the fleets that they, uh, did better than, um, the city and county of Denver, Sacramento, California, city of Long Beach, California, city of Greenville, South Carolina, Bellevue, Washington, Fort Collins, Colorado, Anaheim, California, Dublin, Ohio, New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, and the city of Beverly Hills. So, congratulations to our fleets. The next one is, congratulations to our Traffic Planning Division. Um, I have an email here from some folks that live on Somerset Court, um, who acknowledged the fact that Kim and I receive a lot of complaints about what's going on on Lower Roswell Road, and they just wanted to voice, well, they say, "I would like now to voice my praise and admiration for all the workers involved in the project. I am impressed by the traffic planning for each section, by the professionalism and courtesy of the workers." So, thank you to them. The next one is, um, for, find his name, Sergeant Thorpe. He is a detective with Criminal Investigative Unit at Precinct Four. Person in East Cobb had her car stolen, uh, beginning part of the month. Thanks to OnStar, the vehicle was located the next day, um, in a parking lot in Villarickon and had been impounded. Um, the victim had no way to get there. Sergeant Thorpe, uh, volunteered, um, and took her to get her car. When they got there, they found out that the impound lot only took cash. Sergeant Thorpe, um, took her to the ATM so she'd get her money and get her car back, so she just wanted to thank him for the extra effort. Um, update on East Cobb Pipeline, those of you that are out there know that there are, um, multiple crews working. Some work during the day, some work during the night. As always, if you need any updated information, go to the Cobb Marietta Water Authority or call the chairman, 'cause he'll call me. And, uh, another, um, area that has, um, been a little bit of concern, and a shout-out to Phyllis Stalling and DOT, um, AT&amp;T has been installing new fiber, and through the hard work of Phyllis and some, uh, arm twisting with AT&amp;T, they have an eight-hundred number, which is eight-five-five-five-two-zero-one-seven-five-seven. If they are in your neighborhood and there's issues with the work or, um, the afterwards, call them and, um, they will come out and resolve it. And finally, I wanna offer congratulations to our newest Congresswoman, the first Republican woman elected to Congress in Georgia, Karen Handel. I had the honor and privilege of being at her, um, swearing-in last night in Congress. It was interesting to see how their meetings worked compared to ours, and for those of you that think that this is a free-for-all, you've seen nothing until you've watched that. But anyway, it was, um, it was a, uh, interesting event, and I was, um, happy to see her and the congressman from South Carolina this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just one, uh, brief announcement, as many of you know, I was, uh, I went, went up to New York last week with a delegation from Cobb for, to have the ratings agency review our, uh, our ratings again, and we're gonna be reaffirmed as a triple A, but what I really wanna do is not talk so much about that, is that I wanna, uh, do a shout-out to Mr., Mr. Hankerson, who came up on the trip and, uh, did something which probably won't get in any books, but what he did was, is that he, um, he affirmed and, um, gave encouragement to the Raiders that, even though there were many new faces at the table, uh, Mr. Hosack was, was there, um, Mr. Volkman and I, he said that the transition, uh, is in place that week, that, that the, all the ratings could have. have complete confidence in the new management team, and that he thought that the days in Cobb were not a great behind us, were great in front of us, and by these words, did more than any chart could ever done in this book that we put together. Because we have somebody with Mr. Hankerson's reputation and experience and wisdom say words like that to brand-new people on the block. Those words are priceless. And so I hope Mr. Hankerson's watching tonight. If he's not, I hope to let people know that this trip was successful because of the Class Act and actions demonstrated by Mr. Hankerson. And as I, as I keep referring to, Mr. Hankerson may, he may not be a presence here every day, but his legacy still remains. We're still bringing him back to help us to get to, to the new budget for 2018. We'll be using his experience, and I just think that, um, sometimes, you know, just more of the same, that what we have right now is a reflection of Mr. Hankerson's vision many decades ago of creating Excel and starting a leadership program that has produced the kind of people that lead in Cobb right now, including the County Manager and, and Bill Volkman. So tonight, I want to say thank you to Mr. Hankerson. You're gone, but you're not, and I'm glad that you're still with us. So with that, I am gonna adjourn this meeting tonight, and, uh, see you next, see you in two weeks.[1317.63]